Oh, did you go live?
Uh, yeah, we had that, um. A weekend.
That's a lot.
Home there.
No, I didn't want to disappoint you, but.
There's appointments.
Why, why should my Buffalo? I mean, the pictures are so lovely. Barely clouding the sky.
A long, long time ago, thirty years ago.
Are you actually from Buffalo?
Yep. And rest.
You're from.
Rest of my veins.
All the time, because my bottle's from way upstate. Way back in Buffalo.
Yeah. Buffalo, I think Buffalo is food. It's not. Sees as this. No, no, man. Well, it's a huge ethnic population. So it's all real. There is fast food there, but not like. Get along guys, have a knee in Ohio. Yeah. Back. Yeah.
It's a proper, like, rusted out town.
Yeah, a lot of Greek, a lot of Indian, a lot of Italian. It's very good. And then, of course, the. Alright.
Bring in. Kay, can you get us rolling, please? It is September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. This is the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of Carbondale, Colorado. Kay, could you please set us off with roll call?
Nicholas DeFrank.
Here.
Jeff Davlin is absent. Kim McGee.
Here.
Jared Mark.
Here.
Cindy Suplesio is absent. Jesse Garcia.
Here.
Anne Crimmer.
Here.
Franco Palumbo.
Here.
Great. Thank you for that, Kay. Um, and just to check in on, do we have anybody else joining us today virtually besides Jared? Okay. Thanks. Alrighty. Moving past body privileges and conflicts, unless anybody has any items to share this evening. Okay. Um, consent agenda, any comments, questions? On that? Uh, I did have one. I noticed that Ryan was listed as an attendee on that, our new town manager. I don't think we realized that. I think moving forward, um, is it okay to request that the town, if the town is going to have folks on as a respect to this commission? Those people are identified, especially if they're going to be listed as participants in the meeting. Uh, just for transparency and fairness. Thanks. Other than that. Any, I will take.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to Jared, second to Jesse.
Thank you, guys. Uh, we are not as full this evening. So I'm. As far as opening up for public comment, and it was not on the agenda, I think we can move past that, seeing that we have no one online besides Jared and no one in the audience. Um, Jared, can you, um, with that, can you kind of launch us into our loan action item for the evening? And maybe it's a clarification question. Um, we closed public comment last week. Do we need to reopen that with no one in attendance? It says a formality, or how does that work?
No, you'd only have to reopen it if somebody wants to speak, and I'd encourage you guys at, at each meeting to reopen it if someone wants to speak. But it's not something we have to reopen and close every single time.
Okay. I, I was, it was more just the fact that we had no, no one to speak.
Yeah, certainly.
Um, but with that said, I guess we can move right into tonight's agenda.
Yeah, so, um, I'll keep this short and sweet. The memo really kind of pulled out the questions that I believe we didn't get to at the last meeting. Um, kind of reorganized them in light of Jared's recommendations. Um, and so, uh, really Attachment A is last meeting's packet. Um, we really haven't provided any new information to this group, but thought it'd be worth, um, moving through kind of the rest of the questions this evening. Um, and provide staff with directions so we can come back with additional information and, um, draft code amendments for your guys' consideration at a future meeting.
Great. Thank you and Ellie for putting us together to organize tonight. I appreciate it. Um, I think as a commission, uh, to want to thank you all for a really great process last time. I think every, it seemed like everybody was able to kind of share their opinions and their thoughts on it while still we were able to rein things in into a reasonable time window. So, um, would love to do that again this evening. I know we might have some bigger pieces to dig into. But, um, hoping to have a similar format. That said, do any of you have any requests for changes to the format or the approach? Can we kind of stick with a similar one? Um, any other comments, insights, requests?
No, I would just echo it. I really appreciated everybody's input. Uh, I think we did it in a very timely manner. Um, maybe somebody was cracking the whip. I don't know. Couldn't be me. Um, but yeah, I appreciate everybody's diligence with that. It was really nice. So, thank you.
Right on. Then let's, let's dig in. Um, so, uh, as it's a quick reminder, we, uh, as identified here, we talked about kind of attached versus detached last week. Some of the parking implications and then impervious, um, coverage implications as well. So this week, uh, I see the three main ones being kind of A D U design and size to start. Um, the idea of short-term rentals and how that may, um, how we want to think about that and pose questions. And then, and then also the review process. Um, in seeing all this, I, I think it's pretty easy to see that there are kind of two levels to your kind of. There is, you know, we're looking at some kind of landmark kind of code text amendments with this process. Um, and I said a couple of times, so at, at the risk of being redundant. Um, I'd like to recommend that we don't think about, that we think that this is an opportunity to initiate, uh, something very valuable for our town. But we don't have to do it all at once. So as we got, as we go through these items, as we think about kind of, and we kind of have a dialogue within these three items tonight. Um, something that, you know, just, just a thought I had speaking with Jared earlier today was maybe we think about this in kind of like a two bucket or a two-phase process. What are the things that you all think are really important and really valuable for kind of iteration number one? And as we will very likely circle back on this, um, once it is kind of codified and in staff and time, I've been able to see some of the results of that. I, I imagine that we will be looking at it again, you know, at a six-month or a one-year or two-year kind of timeline to kind of have some lessons learned, some moments to kind of see what has changed. And at that point, likely there will be some changes and an opportunity then to kind of continue to beef up that, um, that language. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there. Um, anybody have anything to add to that? Any kind of challenge to that? Please, if you feel free to check in on that if it doesn't sound good or valuable. Um, seeing no one jumping out, uh, let's dig into A D U design and size. Jared, you want to lead us into this one? I think as a sitting architect, maybe you could provide some intro to, you know, for us, some perspective on this, if that's comfortable for you to throw that on you.
Sure, I'm happy to. Um. I guess, uh, if we want to just go down the list here, or be asking for my opinions on these, or like, do you want me to just kind of take us through these points?
I, I guess what I was thinking, you, you helped this, this commission last time, I think. Given your background to provide some insights on some of the implications, both financial and logistical regarding A D Us in built environment. And so, um, we can either, you know, easily go down it, or if there's anything that sticks out to you, um, as a way to kind of or- organize these subtopics, um, open to that as well.
Okay. Well, I think.
Sorry to throw that at you out of the blue.
No. That's okay.
I'm sure you're up for the task.
Yeah, I, I deal with these significantly, so, um, I'm happy to, I'm happy to take this one. Um, I mean, if, I'm gonna just start going down the list, um, here real quick, but the thing that jumps out is the number one thing on here, which I, uh, I question what are my other committee members think on this, but a two-bedroom A D U, I do understand that. I understand that there may be a need for it in this town, um, but I do know that if we don't set certain limitations of like how big big can be or, um, things like that, you might run into the issues of, you know, your A D U is a larger mass than your primary residence, and that's, you know, some of these more historic homes and some of these things like that, you could really get into a lot of trouble with, um, you know, how those are responding to the current site, to the neighbors. I just feel like, um, a two-bedroom approach is, uh, though it would be nice, ideally, with how many times we hear complaints about parking. To me, I'm just not sure that that has my support of a two-bedroom layout. I think, yes, constructability and finances are something to weigh in here, but I do think as far as overall neighborhood impact, I, I think they're, they're pretty difficult to, um, to just say, yeah, I think that's okay. You know, I think that would be a conditional use sort of, um, venture, you know what I mean?
Right.
And I'm just curious if anybody has any support or, you know, any challenging ideas to as well.
I just have a question about that. Would, um, Part C, the ratio of the primary residence to the A D U help control that issue that you're talking about? Because I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but I'm interested in what the thinking is.
Yeah, I think, I think that really should be. I think that's also really difficult to manage if you're, for limiting them on ratio of sixty-six to thirty-three percent, but we're also having a maximum square footage or a minimum area of all these things. I think, I think it might get a little bit complicated with, with math, right? I think that would be really difficult for somebody to figure out exactly how much of an A D U they can have, and if we're treading on that sixty-six percent and thirty-three percent, I think, um, to me, those numbers are a little bit more arbitrary. I don't think you're ever gonna build something that, that big. I don't think anyone's gonna want to spend the money to spend something or build something that big, you know what I mean? And if we reduce the, if we limit, um, if we limit it to one bedroom, you're rarely ever gonna encroach on that, I would believe.
Is, I mean, just to be devil's advocate for a second, is the number of bedrooms, I mean, these could be two small bedrooms.
That's what.
Right.
Because if you look at it, like one of these little tiny miners cottages. And, I mean, that's a.
Familiar with.
Seven hundred and eighty-two square feet, people.
Yeah.
But, you know, and if you were to, it seems like we have too many, um, different things that they'd have to consider. It seems like it should either be number of bedrooms or percentage or something, but.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, it's a challenging one, really, because I don't know that we should restrict how many bedrooms they are, but again, you don't want to see something that's huge and the home is tiny, the original dwelling.
Yeah, Franco.
May, may I ask a question? What is our definition of, I, I've gotten this question this week from an architect at my current job. I'm asking you, what is the definition of a bedroom?
We rely on the building code to define that, and I believe the building code requires it to be called a bedroom if it has, um, sleeping and, um, closet space, but Jared, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I don't know particularly what ours, uh, coincides to, but how we work around this in Aspen is that if you have a bathroom associated to that bedroom or things like that, that's exactly how it comes out as a bedroom or an office. So if you want a space to be a bedroom, don't put a bathroom near it, really. Um, I think by definition is, you know, if you want an office um, versus a bedroom, it's typically sizes of windows and placements of windows.
So it's almost subjective, like it'd be, it's an interpretation, really, it is, it is finest at this point.
Exactly, and from, from a professional standpoint, we prefer to keep it that blurry.
Let me throw out a crazy idea, um, or something to check as far as, you know, I, I can't imagine A D Us in this process being super simple, right? This, the solution is likely not gonna be like, yes, you can throw it in your backyard, or whatever. For me, this starts, it starts out less about a discussion of how many bedrooms and more of this triangulation between ratio to primary or principal structure. Relationship to impervious lot coverage or lot fit, which could also, I guess, I guess be looming if we talk about the, the verticality of it. And then just size. So it's, you know, the object being the A D U, how it relates to principal structure, and then how it relates to the site. That's just the way my, my brain does the math. Um, and so in that, it seems like, it seems rather arbitrary to say how many bedrooms are there. Now, some of these later items we're gonna talk about here in a second, you know, will, will play into that on some level as far as short-term rentals um, or review processes, because we're talking of, obviously, like you said, Jared, we're thinking about parking and how that's gonna impact this as well as, you know, all of a sudden, we're at, we've gone from one person to a potential family. So there, there are implications, and I, I don't mean to be ignorant to that. I think just to start out, as far as kind of the large bucket items, it is that triangle that I see of site, principal, and objective A D U size.
Yeah, and, uh, Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, would they have to go if, off the, uh, square footage to constitute a bedroom for international residential code, which I think is seventy square feet, and then the rescue openings?
Yeah, e- essentially, yes. Um, you know, the building code would determine what that minimal, minimum livable or habitable square footage is to, for, for rooms. I think seventy is what bedrooms currently are.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so none of this is really intended to supersede or override what the building code requires space-wise.
I agree with you, Nick. Uh, I don't think maybe we're, we're focusing on the right thing with bedrooms, but more of the, the floor area and the ratios and the percentages, I think. You know, why regulate something that's in someone's house? You know, we're already regulating it as a, as an accessory dwelling. You know, how, how, how far do we want to regulate, uh, with regards to how, uh, a room is partitioned? So, that's just my opinion and.
No, I think it's good. So I mean, is it, is it part of this to get these rogue A D Us? What are we, what are, it's the correct term?
We've just been calling them banned.
Yeah, thanks, but, which is much more politically correct. It's, it's to, to, to get folks to say, hey, you know, I, you know, some way to, a path toward, like, okayness and identification.
Do you, do you guys know the house that's on Colorado and Eighth? It's white, it's historic, it's, it's right on the corner of Colorado and Eighth, and I don't know, since it wasn't part of our world, I don't know if that was a lot split or what, but the thing they built behind it, two stories, it's massive, and the, again, that's probably not really an A D U.
Plus an eighty or something.
Lot split.
Okay. But the scale of that is so strange.
Yeah.
And like you said, I figured it must have been a lot split, but in my mind, that's what we're trying to avoid with all of this, is exactly what you're talking about. Who cares what's going on inside the house?
Yeah.
It's how does it look on the lot? How, how, how do the structures relate to each other?
Okay, so good conversation, and I'm just gonna kind of just, so does A, does anyone feel passionately about A being a, I'm gonna go back to my earlier, like a, like a, a primary bucket item that, that needs to be kind of included in kind of past one language?
Uh, I do.
Okay.
Again, um, I do believe that they should be one bedrooms, and if there's any reason or ability to, you know, go into or go above one bedroom, right? I think that's where, and I'm getting ahead of myself here, like the review process portion of this is like, I think that's where it comes into a can, like a special review or a conditional sort of thing is because I think that's where we're kind of, we need to evaluate the impact on the neighbors. We need to ensure that the neighbors are very okay with this. I know, like, even when you have just a small A D U going on, neighbors have a lot of opinions on these things. And so I just want to make sure that we, as a commission, are able to have the neighbor's voice be heard on these issues, because that's potentially, you know, twice the parking spaces or twice the amount of cars that are now filling up our already packed streets, and I think that's the, the impact that I am seeing coming, and that's the, that's the reason why I care so much about this.
That's good. I appreciate, yeah.
Jared, if I may, uh, to counter that, I, I would say, um, when it comes to one bedrooms versus two bedrooms, I would say that we leave it to, um, you know, like Franco's point, why regulate more, that we leave it to the interpretation of the applicant um, based on meeting that criteria for international building code, uh, because if they have an eight-hundred-square-foot A D U, um, and they can justify using two bedrooms out of it, um, so long as they, they meet the interpretation of I B C, then perhaps it's something that, yes, we, we do, um, review, but I don't know that we say automatic no or limit, um, A D Us to one-bedroom or studios.
A point of clarification, I don't, and, and maybe I misheard you, but maybe this is kind of a good, I, I didn't hear you saying no, I heard, and I, I took what you said as it is follows a different review process, perhaps.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so, 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 which I, I think is actually fair, because you made some points that I hadn't thought of, which, you know, because one bedroom can actually house, or I'm sorry, a two-bedroom A D U can very quickly become two couples with two, three, four cars. You can all do this math and see the escalation happen really quick here. So, it isn't so much that it's a, it's a no by any means, but, but perhaps there is, you know, as, as we do see that there, there's, you know, number three here, the review process. Maybe you do if you are in a beyond a one-bedroom or applying for a one, more than a one-bedroom, that you get slotted into a different, a different kind of track, if you will.
Yep.
Does, does that feel?
Yes.
Is that kind of what you're saying, and does that?
That's exactly what I'm trying to say. And I think, I think just to add a little bit more clarity to that is, you know, the difference in square footage between an office and a bedroom is, I would say, is pretty small. And so if somebody's like, well, we can't do two bedrooms without going to a review, they would just do the larger set of that office, and you would have two bedrooms, and that's how you'd get around the process, right? That person have a smaller bedroom and you'd be likely out of, um, just outside of code. But I mean, if you're looking to make your money, that would probably be how somebody would get around that. So to me, I think when we're looking at bedroom count, I think that just kind of makes it very clear that we just want to, we want to make sure that we're not having a high impact on the neighborhoods that these are going into.
That's fair.
I have a question. Um, do we really call it bedroom count, or do we call it room count?
It would, I mean, room count and bed count, you know, are synonymous, pretty much. I don't think you would count your living room or your kitchen or your dining room or anything like that. That would be more of your square footage calculation, but as far as how you measure the use of water, it's by bedroom in, like, Picken County, right? It's not by tap. It's, you have a bedroom, you have another bedroom, your E C U, like how your water is metered and, and how your fees are based are similar off of that. So I think if we just do bedroom count.
I'm just thinking about people that will want to circumvent the process and say, oh, we just have a family room that has a door on it.
Right.
And this is our bedroom, and this is our dining area and kitchen, and, and it's actually a two-bedroom unit, or like with the office and bedroom. But I don't know the right way to parse that to police it.
But, and I see where you're going with it, but I, I think, given the cost of construction anymore in the valley, as, as, or, as well as, like, these people are wanting to make A D Us, they don't want to build something huge typically, you know, I'm just trying to, not yet, right? I don't think, I don't think pricing favors that at all right now. I, I think you're kind of gonna scare people away with it. Um, yeah.
And, but, but yet, we aren't talking about homes. These are all
Exactly.
subordinate structures or spaces within a primary structure. So, looking at it as, I mean, actually, I think it's kind of interesting to say, like, you've got bathrooms, you've got a kitchen, those are clearly identified. I, I mean, do A D Us have, and maybe you have like a great room where there's like a, like a, an elongation of the kitchen, it's like a kind of with a, a dinette in there. Beyond that, A D, I mean, for the, the sizes we're talking about, um, I, I don't know, I, I guess I get, I get your point in, and, um, and I, I also hear, like, you know, we're dancing along this edge of, we want people to, we want to support this, and at the same time, over, you know, overregulation's gonna bite us on that.
Exactly.
How do we find a kind of a slipstream there? Anything else on the bedroom item before we move on?
I, I just, you know, one additional thing, I appreciate, and your comments. Again, these are planners that are reviewing these applications, um, typically, and we're not architects. So, you know, we're not looking at, you know, a, a floor plan saying, you know, is this a bedroom, is this a office, is this, you know, how close are we to measuring to the bathroom? You know, our, our code is not, I'm saying our for my profession of being a planner, our code is not the I R C, it's, it's the land use code. So, you know, you know, and who knows? Ten years down the line, someone buys a house and they say, we want to put, split up this big room, and they just get it, you know, an interior remodel or whatever, and we can't regulate that. So it's, like I said, it's, it's difficult to regulate the interior design of thing. If one thing we can regulate, it's, does this accessory dwelling unit have a kitchen?
Right.
Yep.
Projectively, clearly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kitchen, bathroom, certain amount of area for living. I mean, you could have a studio, you don't have to have a designated bedroom either, you know?
Great transition into letter B. Uh, perfect, Mark, I love it.
Yeah.
Is that good for, um, any specific needs beyond what was?
No, I think we got some good feedback there. We can come back with some recommendations and some options for you all to consider.
Great.
Cool. I will say, just one more point of clarity on there. Um, and I don't know if this is a limitation done specifically by Aspen, but I've never done a two-bedroom A D U. I've done a two-bedroom C D U, like a caretaker dwelling unit, but never an A D U. Um, so, and I think that's based off of total area, and so we just never really pushed that very much that way. So, I don't think we'll see a lot of them. I don't think this is a major issue, but I just, I, to me, this is forefront from. I don't think we'll see a lot of them. I don't think this is a major issue, but I just, I, to me, this is forefront from how. All of the ADUs that we have reviewed, parking, 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 parking and neighborhood impact and all that has always been the number one thing. So. I just don't wanna hear it anymore. You know what I mean?
Good luck with that. Okay, minimum size. Can an ADU be a hundred square feet?
No.
Can it be two hundred square feet? What do you all think? Like, what what like, how important is the idea of a minimum size or a limitation on an ADU? Besides, the outside of building code requirements.
What's the current, um, criteria? Because I know there's a difference between accessory use, like say in office building or. Once you convert it to the the dwelling part.
Yeah, currently. Currently, our ADU, um, regulations state a minimum size is three hundred square feet. Um, we did. Talked to our building official recently and, um, in the twenty twenty four. Um, IRCs, which the town is not on, they have a appendix for ADU specifically. I think upon a brief look, um, the building code has a minimum size, I believe of a hundred and seventy square feet. And so. You know, i- if. If the planning commission is maybe, um. Not keen on the arbitrary three hundred square feet that I think that the our zoning code has. You know, that could be one fallback of saying, let's follow what the. Building codes are are using for minimum square footage. And that's usually based on more life safety considerations than. Zoning considerations.
I'm curious, has anybody? Seen an issue with an ADU that's too small? Like, what would the repercussions be?
Bumping your head. It mean, honestly, other than accessibility or age and place or physical needs. Anything outside of that? Like, you know, universal design kind of approach considerations.
But we don't have to stick to those. Are you asking if we should?
No, no, I I think, well, I'll out myself. I'm looking for a way to remove yet one more layer of regulation. Right? Like. If if there's something, it's it's kind of lock, stocked and loaded in in the twenty twenty four IRC. That they've done the math for us on that where it could feel less arbitrarily arbitrary on the town's part. I I'm sure they've done something, you know, to to come up with that number. Um, I mean, and on personally speaking, I don't see why. It would ever like, I would ever say, no, 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 you can't go smaller. What does that solve? You know, um, it's it's on them. If 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 they create a space that's too small and it's.
So I think, I think what you're looking at.
Can afford a three hundred square foot.
I think what you need to look at at that point is not so much the person providing the ADU, but the person within the ADU. And your quality of life, I think if you're anything under three hundred, which is extreme efficiency between a. A kitchen or kitchenette of some sort, like a cooking surface, a bathroom and a sleeping area. I think you're looking at a very. Unpleasant experience and you're limiting your ability to get in natural light to some of these places. Uh, if you go in smaller, you're kind of fighting your geometry and you're not really looking at a. A a nice place to be. You know what I mean? So I think the three hundred square foot minimum.
I've lived in two hundred and fifty square feet. There was a lot of light and it was a good quality of life, so obviously not where I am now. But but it's, so I think it's kind of weird to. To. Stick with the three hundred square feet.
I I guess I go back to the economics of it, right? Like, there's two directions. One, on one hand, what can the owner afford to build? What is within their 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 availability? And number two. Come on, skip on culture, like. Somebody who just simply, you know. Who 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 can't afford to live out in one of those new great apartments that are a thousand dollars a month on one thirty three. But, you know, this a hundred and seventy square feet fits their quiver of squeeze and is enough to, you know.
Put up a hammock.
Yeah, or whatever. I mean, there's something I I think about the idea that that I although I hear you, Jared, and and. And it would likely not be the most luxurious accommodation. It may allow for, I think, what the BOT has challenged us with on this. I mean, that is to. Be able to find and create a a. Um, uh, a more diverse mosaic of housing. Is that fair?
I'm thinking about employee housing I've known in Aspen, um. Cause there were a lot of old buildings that were like dormitory style, but they didn't say it was dormitory style. Um, one of my husband's first apartments. Uh, he said they were twin beds and you could touch all four walls from your bed. And his neighbors were, uh, some Kiwi rugby players. One would have to leave the room for the other one to be able to get in or out. So so there's a lot of things people put up with for desperation. The question is, do we wanna do? Better than that for our citizens? Or have a lot of us scraped by and lived in not ideal conditions? To kinda work our way up to something else in the area. Cause people can live with some pretty crappy conditions. I mean, it's been going on in this valley for a long time. People, people.
That's small and crappy though. This fly is small and crappy.
That little one that I lived in, it was nice. And I needed that price point at that time.
That's where I'm at. As a guy coming across the country to move, to find my place in Colorado. I think, you know, we're sure we all have a level of story like this, you know, coming of age. Do you have a lot of money? You do what you can. You make it work and. Something that is small could be a new level of allowing. You know, new create like a new portion of pop- population. To be part of this town.
Are there minimums with what? If we went to the one seventy. Are there minimums on what we would expect to see in that unit?
That's a good question.
I think just also a point of clarity here. Uh, Carbondale's rental and housing market is completely detached from reality. I think you would see people charging.
The rest of the.
Two thousand dollars amount a month for a hundred and seventy square feet. If I'm being absolutely honest here, I think. I think we've kinda lost that ability to find a a special pricing point. People would just see, oh, they're charging this for a one bedroom. Which is typically the case. Hence why I'm not living in town anymore. I can't afford there anymore. So I I I do agree, I do see the benefit of going smaller for. The object, the objective of hitting a price point. I just don't have faith. That that would actually happen. Given cost of construction, given everything else and the availability and sizes and all that, the market. I just don't see that happening. So do we protect for the now or do we protect for the later?
What what are we, what are we protecting by having a minimum?
Quality of life. Like you're looking at your average hotel rooms about three hundred, three hundred and twenty square feet. Like, would you wanna live in a hotel room for?
Uh, there's, there's so many what ifs and variables, you know, do you wanna live in rifle? To go to work in Aspen? Do you wanna, you know, i- i- if, you know, do you want to be stuck in traffic every day? No, the 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 amenities in in Carbondale and 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 what we could set ourselves apart. Is the availability for more housing. If if we have more housing stock, this is always kind of like the supply and demand kind of thing. You know, does does, you know, rental prices go down? I'm not a an economist. But, yeah, it people, people cram themselves in anywhere they can. You know, if it's two to a a bedroom. You know, if if you wanna work here, it will. No, no, I I don't know. I just, I I just don't feel like this is something that, again, we need to hang our hat on right now. I think there's, uh, bigger things to fry in this list.
Great, thank you for that. So, um. You just kept your cap off on your point. The quality of life is the opportunity to live in this valley. I'm just gonna throw that out there. And and yes, I mean. It's to not have to, I mean, I think you make great points of removing a commute. Review, removing some of the challenges to be able to take part in this community. And if a smaller ADU is part of that. Maybe it's worth considering. Is does anybody wanna fall on their sword? Is it with the mi- with a a minimum size? Being a requirement or kind of a primary component of this. Falling, I'm sorry to be so aggressive in that statement. Does anyone feel? Sorry, that was not appropriate. Uh, does does anyone feel that this is a a a kind of a primary bucket item? A of having a a minimum size. And and perhaps the three hundred, the the existing three hundred square feet.
My thought on this is because we've already discussed being okay with detached ADUs. Just lessening the minimum size give us an opportunity for someone to come up with a prefab. That people can put on a foundation. Not have the individual stick built cost and actually get us housing.
And. To snowball on that, Ann. Does, if we loosen the minimum square footage? Does that provide more opportunities for attached or, you know, basement ADUs or things like that? Are we? I don't know, I'm at, I'm at a. At a mental impasse right now of like, okay, well, if we loosen it, maybe that allows more people to. Open up their currently built homes and then if we keep the three hundred square foot, then that protects the. The value of those being built and detached.
So in order to just keep us moving, I'm just gonna look at each of you and does it do? Jared, do you think there, do we need to have a minimum size for ADUs in Carbondale?
I think we need to have a minimum, but I don't think it needs to be three hundred.
Okay, is there a number that you'd like to throw out there?
Man, I'm just gonna go with, um, Kim's number and do two fifty.
And do you feel that there needs to be a minimum size, uh?
Um, I would say yes to minimum, um.
Do you wanna go a different direction?
One seventy. Seems tough because I don't wanna see people calling a toaster oven a kitchen. Um, cause this is meant to be real housing, not what we currently have. To circumvent the ADU policies. So I would say somewhere in two, two fifty, I think that could be comfortable for a single person.
Jesse, how about you?
Um, I would, yes, agree to a minimum for that quality of life, but I also know it's a money problem, so I'm understanding of that, um. That it's it's hard to dictate, uh, people's finances when it comes to giving them that minimum. Um, and so for that reason, the number, I don't have it in my head. I just worry that, um, if we. Go too low on that number, that it could in turn promote more short, short term rentals versus long term housing. Um, and so I just wanna remind fellow commissioners of that. I'm sure we'll come across it, but, um. Yeah, that that's my my opinion on it for now.
Great point, thank you. Kim?
Initially, I didn't think we really needed a minimum, but I would say that one seventy sounds. Fine to me.
Okay.
If we want a minimum.
Got it. So you would align with the. Preordained or predesigned I- IRC requirement. Franco, what do you got?
Yeah, I'm Jesse, great, great points. I. I'm with you on that one. Let the minimum be the IRC. Yeah, we always worry about quality of life and. But, you know, when your quality of life is not to live in the valley, then what quality of life do you have? So that's my opinion.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Moving on, um, ratios. Sixty six to thirty three. Jared, was there a basis for that ratio originally? Do you know the? Where that came from? Is that? Or just kind of come with our three hundred square feet?
Um, I don't know if there was. A specific rationale behind it. It might have just been part of, um. Clarion's kind of stock. Code when we got it and they just kinda said, hey. This seems like that's that appropriate primary secondary based on. What we've done in numerous communities, um. A- and and like I put in the initial memo, that seems like that's generally the ratio. However. When you get to the. Larger units and the smaller units, those ratios either get. Wider or closer together. But, but yeah, you know, I think it's it's. The 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 sixty six thirty three, whether it's sixty five thirty five, but you know, whatever the number is. I think it does. It it does. Drive home the point that you guys brought up earlier of this primary residence. Secondary residence, and the more you kinda get that to fifty fifty, what you're talking about is a duplex. Um, and so I would would kind of caution against going. Too close to fifty fifty, but whether sixty six thirty three is right or not, one third, two third, I I don't. I I don't think there was too much rationale behind it.
Okay, thanks. On average. Uh, is there any sense of average home size in Carbondale? Do we, do we know that? Is it?
Kim's home skews it all now.
Well, I know, well, we clearly there's like a a wide, you know, uh, but as far as like maybe a bell curve, we're looking at our center, kind of our our center deviation.
We haven't really looked into that too much. I'm sure we could. Find some information based on home sales of what's selling, but but clearly what's being built. Recently is. You know, the the four thousand plus square foot homes. Even the larger additions or the tear down, new builds in. Not RVR, you're still looking at. Twenty five to four thousand square foot homes.
Yeah, and and my my gut tells me it's somewhere in the. High teens to the low twos. Around maybe twenty two, twenty four hundred square feet would be maybe that that middle zone. It's kind of by the housing stock, the year and kind of what we see as far as the type of home.
Yeah, I was thinking about the neighborhoods that are immediately affected. By anything that Board of Trustees decides on ADUs. You have Old Town. And then the other neighborhoods are mostly the nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies ones that are bi-levels, split entries. Um, and ranches, I don't know. Am I wrong in that thought?
No, I think that's.
So I'm guessing most of them are under two thousand square feet in in general, but.
Not by much.
Yeah, okay.
And do some quick math.
Depends on if you're counting basements.
On lot fit.
Yeah.
We would.
So basement, although not typically counted in square footage, it would be counted for an ADU.
No, it's counted, basement's counted, like if it's a habitable basement, it's counted in square footage. Yeah.
So, um, if if we look at, let's say, let's use two thousand square feet, so just like, just just quickly kind of coming from that. That puts us under the eight hundred. Um, as far as what would be available to those lots. Um, and maybe one, can you, can you remind me, what was the challenge? There was the one challenge, um, from one of the speakers last time. And I'm forgetting his name, but he lives, he lives on, uh, is it Eighth? Third Street, yeah.
Yeah, I can.
Great memory.
Could it was Kenny?
Yo, Kenny, yeah. Yeah.
And that's what limited his, the size of his.
He was, and he was well under the eight hundred. Maximum, I think his was like four twenty five or. Yeah, it was, it it was a very small ADU based on his impervious lot coverage maximums.
His house on that?
It wasn't.
It was the.
It wasn't the square footage, and and as we kind of put in. It wasn't the square footage and and as we kind of put in in our initial staff memo. We haven't really reviewed any ADUs larger than eight fifty outside of, I think, two that were intended to accommodate ADA accessible living. Every other A D U the town's approved since twenty fourteen has been well within that size limit.
Does anybody have a strong opinion about this, but ratio calc's being used as a kind of a primary? I guess uh limitation of A D U size and then therefore subset to that, the sixty six thirty three standard that's currently in place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I haven't really quite formulated this full thought into my head, but you know. The the limiting factor on a lot of developability on property is the is the uh improvable surfaces. That's basically how we kind of not allow a dev- a a property to be completely covered in pavement or construction. So I'm just curious as to, you know, typically is a is the ratio the limiting factor on a lot of people's homes? Or is it the impermeable lot coverage that's the limiting factor on how much they could build on their property? Jared.
From I mean, I I I think I think for total development, it's likely impervious lot coverage is the limiting factor for um what's getting built. However, we do have properties that that have a larger primary resident square footage and just strictly applying that. And I know this is kind of getting down to the next question, but strictly applying that ratio without any sort of maximum, they could increase that and they could increase that largely within the footprint of their existing building. And I think to to Anne's kind of comments earlier, a lot of where this is applicable are gonna be the older neighborhoods where you have split levels and ranch style development, where there's plenty of height, a second story can be added. Um, there there's a property in town that that is an existing structure and had a banned at A D U. And um they're trying to kind of reestablish that and it's completely within the footprint of the primary building. Yet the limiting factor in that situation is overall square footage. Sorry, I'm trying to be purposely vague not to 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 talk about a specific property, but um but but you know, so although, yes, I think impervious lot coverage will likely be the primary limiting factor. Ratios, maximum A D U sizes, things like that will be significant, but but probably more secondary um limiting factors for most properties.
Okay, maybe just to take a step back from this, just kind of look at it as a concept. Right now, the concept is we allow an A D U to be one third the size of the primary structure, right? It's kind of like a big idea. If we want, i- i- if if the goal is to provide our larger community with the opportunity to build ADUs outside of deed restrictions, et cetera, you know, P U D requirements. At a minimum is a house like yours. Where what would if what what is one third of of your house size?
Do the math, a third of eight hundred and seventy two, so not much. But you could live in there.
So you could, that would fit with our, if we had minimums, you say around two hundred square feet or even the one seventy, that would that would work. Um, depending on lot size, of course, and coverage. Now, if we, so I saw, what I'm trying to do is is kind of define minimums and maximums here. So now we have, let's put a a McMansion, let's say it's around forty five or fifty five hundred square feet. We look at a third of that and it's clearly outside of. We haven't gotten there yet, but I would be surprised if anyone on this commission said we need to raise it up to fif- to we need to double the maximums of our ADUs. If anybody wants to raise a hand in the spoiler alert, now is the time. So I I I guess I'm not, I guess I'm not getting to a a solid point here. I'm just trying to like paint a picture or a frame for us to think about how this ratio works. Um, to Jared's point, really, we're trying to stay away from that fifty fifty split. We don't want the competition between primary and secondary structures. Which is already happening. I'm I'm trying to see a a way where this ratio breaks something or gets in the way of something. And I'm and I guess I I'm not able to do it. Can somebody else show me a way where this current ratio is problematic in some notable way for providing the Carbondale community regardless of income, home size, lot size? Again, we're not talking about coverage, previous coverage. Does it somehow restrict a a resident from building an A D U?
The only time I can think that it would actually impact development is in in Anne or not Anne, Kim, sorry to keep you know, picking on your house here, but like
I brought it up.
You do not meet, you currently do not meet the minimum. Right? Like if we're sticking to one third, like and if you were to go to the minimum, you would exceed that thirty three percent by, you know, a fractional margin, but that's where you're limited. And so I would see that as a limitation personally, every application or building that I have developed in in Carbondale has been limited by um impervious lot coverage and square footage. The the ratio is rarely ever discussed or pushed or met, and they kind of coincide with each other of like, this is your maximum square footage based off of your parents has your house or whatever. So to me, I th- I think having a ratio is a bit of like a fail safe of like, haha, you didn't, you didn't address this piece of code kind of thing, you know? I don't think it, I don't think it's worth anything.
Okay, so then does anyone feel the need to go deeper into this one? Or can this be an easy win? By that, I mean moving on. Like, is it like, does it, does it go up? Does it go down? Is there any value in modifying it? I guess is what I'm going at. And that takes a level of math that I that my brain isn't doing at the moment, just transparency. I don't know, I haven't gotten on my scratch pad and started doing calcs. Maybe there is a a calc component to this, Jared, did you?
I mean, i- i- if there was any desire, I think we could come back at a future meeting and have a simple table of different ratios and some standard
Yeah.
square footages and just present something to you guys, but if there is no desire to really break the two third, one third ratio, then I I I think the the language we have kind of
Stands.
stands well while providing you know, providing maybe a little bit more for some of the smaller primary homes that we have to go slightly above that. Two third, one third ratio.
Okay, maybe then a a small request for staff and if if you all can think of a way where this ratio breaks it in some way for the community. Isn't it to be deep and complex math, but if if in what you're seeing on your side without divulging any kind of like thing um or or resident. Maybe that would be the only thing that would be helpful.
Yeah, we can, we can bring something back if we think of something.
Yeah, great. Okay, can we move on to the last one here? Good, good. Jared Mark has morphed into a two dimensional image. Okay. A D U size increase, bringing it home, final lap. Right now, we are at eight hundred. Is it eight hundred even or is it, um, sorry, it's eight hundred even, right?
Eight fifty for buildings over fifteen hundred square feet, primary residence, it's five hundred for fifteen hundred and under. Which surprisingly is two third, one third.
I was about to say, it's that third. Redundant question after what we were just talking about, doesn't it?
Just how the code is written.
Okay.
Like someone thought about. Um, but they made sure they spelled that out in the code.
Yes. Who has a passionate opinion on size, maximum sizes here? Is anyone thinking A D U should be larger than Kim's house?
It's so hilarious. Everyone's gonna come over and check it out.
All A D U's will be limited to Kim's house. We'll have a site visit at Kim's house before the next.
Great, there's gonna be a picture and you're looking at the code and be like, oh, that one.
I mean, all jokes aside, Kim has a really cool house, so.
It's a great house. Only one of you can visit at a time unless you're notified.
We have to have a ticket. We have a capacity.
Well, I just might as well uh uh P N Z rules.
Right. Well, that'll be in the code too. If you need to go look at this house and walk through it, you only one person at a time.
Right.
And you have to have an appointment.
So um currently we're limited to eight hundred square feet. It fits in the one third ratio um as as just identified. Does anyone think it needs to be, or there's a value in allowing for an enlargement? I think the one, thank you for s- to staff for identifying the second track or the alt track with multiple bedrooms. So in this case, let me just put a hypothetical, someone has a house that is thirty six hundred square feet. Their intent is to create an A D U for a family member and a child. Um, or uh a son and a newlywed wife um with a a young child, something like that. I'm I'm playing to the crowd, obviously, with this, but with transparency. Um, and they want to build twelve hundred square foot A D U on their property. Um, and the intention is all positive in the here and now. I mean, it's family support. Um, or even they want a multifamily A D U um as a short term rental, play the other side of this now, that is still larger than this, but they wanna be able to accommodate families. Um, and their lot fits it. They can park it. And somehow all of the neighbors are super excited about it. So those are two.
This is a utopian.
Utopian Carbondale. We're trying to provide this, the 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 two ends for, you know, why enlarge, like a a larger situation might, right? Again, I'm trying to break this. That's my, it is my intention. Um, so pardon my approach. Who's not buying it?
I think eight fifty is still a pretty big unit. It's a big unit. Um, and I don't see an advantage of going in at this point and expanding the square footage.
So now bucket versus phase two bucket kind of thing. Okay, Jesse?
Um, yeah, I I agree. I don't I don't see the need to increase it from the eight fifty. Um, so that's where I'm at now.
Great, thanks.
I don't know. Well, I kind of am because the ratio and the impervious lot coverage. If those things are right, I don't think I'd have a problem with it being a bigger A D U.
Okay.
So, I don't know.
Okay.
It to me, it's all balance and like scale of what's going on in the lot and obviously you know, then somebody's gonna have to look at parking, but.
But we're also still talking single bedroom and studio units, yes.
It'd be a big bedroom.
Right.
Are we talking single bedrooms?
But we don't know.
I don't think.
I don't know that we completely decided on the bedroom situation.
Well, no, I I I heard we did. We were saying there's two tracks. If you wanna go more than one bedroom, that you are on some level, you are on a different path toward approval, different review process. And I think I saw all the heads nod on that one. So to me, that 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 has opened up the discussions and the potential for multi room.
Feel it's not possible to get two bedrooms and eight hundred fifty square feet. I'm sure it's more than adequate, but. Anybody?
You can call it a bedroom, you can call it an office, but it fits.
I wonder if they limited it to eight hundred fifty because it does still have to be tied into the main water supply. They can't separate them, so I wonder if that's why the the limit was set. Um, and so that might be some more digging on the code or further consultat- uh consul- consulting with um Kevin to see if a twelve hundred square foot A D U would then kick in the new tap fees.
That's true cuz
Good point.
ADUs don't get tap fees, right? Cuz it's all taken by the initial
They get a extension of, extension of service line, service. It's all in the same, it's all in the same tab, I'm pretty sure.
It's all served by the same meters, the same
But there's no additional fee.
There are additional fees for any time you add square footage to a residence.
I mean, we're in America.
What Nick said.
What are your feelings on this, Franco?
So, fun fact, I do live in the A D U. So in in town and and it's not like, it's not like what I'm discussing is like, uh, is it legal? I, good question. No, it's permanent, um. But it's it's not like, it's 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 a, I definitely think you know, you live in this valley, you have a lot of gear, bikes, kayaks, skis. And so, you know. I do think a minimum is, I know a maximum of eight fifty is, I don't know what to go with this, but I've seen other municipalities, Passau, I believe it's twelve hundred. I don't know about Aspen, Jared, but I do think we could maybe look at it as a, you know, different sizes for attached detached, again. Different impacts, you know, for uh doing a basement unit. Do we really limit it to still eight fifty? I think we should think of it more that way. Um, based on the impacts of size, maximum size. And I do think our our code is kind of, you know, has that built in process of already lot coverage. Um, imperme- impermeable, um impermeability, parking, um yada yada, so I think um, that's already kind of been covered, but I do think we should think about how uh a detached and maybe attached could be different maximums personally.
Okay, so maybe maybe this is, maybe what we're coming to is kind of two ideas here, part of very, do a a quick summary. One, I'm not hearing anyone super passionate about it being a primary item, like the the majority of folks, all right, Jared, I'm sorry, I didn't go to you, Jared, my bad.
Sorry, I'm, I mean, I'm kind of glad you didn't. My foot hurts so bad right now.
Well, if you've no big
I'm with Franco, I'm with Franco on this, like, I think there should be different sizes maximums on attached versus detached. Um, I think, I think we could raise it or lower it depending upon certain aspects. I mean, when you look at Aspen, you're kind of dependent upon your zoning district is what guides you to you know, how big of an A D U you can have. Um, or in the county, I think it's um by percentage, or you are working towards a total of a certain area um on the lot, right? We just don't have those lot sizes in here, so eight hundred and fifty, I think, is a great number. Um, where it's at, and I think if we go above eight fifty, just like I'm saying, the two bedrooms, if you wanna push the envelope, then you gotta come talk to us. But it's not a no.
Okay, so maybe we we have two buckets to kind of stick opinion for now. One, the the A T A- attached versus detached conversation, so like kind of like this, this, this again, which tracker you in? And the other one is a little amorphous, but it's kind of just the idea that no one is leaping out of their chair saying that, oh, my gosh, eight hundred and fifty square feet is just not big enough. So as far as if we look at this kind of like a a first pass, a COTEX amendment. So as far as if we look at this kind of like a, a first pass, a co-text amendment, and then circling back later on. Maybe we, this, this isn't an item where we have to open the gates on size right of way, right away. Maybe the first item is more focused on like getting more ADUs to more folks. And if it rolls out well, we can circle back and look at, for example, maybe a detached. Being a gateway to a larger ADU potential down the road.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that opinion, Nick, uh, cuz I know you pointed out in the past is, you know, if you give too much in the beginning, uh, it's hard to take it back. And so, um, I think this is one of those examples.
Okay. Are we good to move to clop, sick opinion or close up number one and move on?
Yes.
Yeah. Time check eight oh eight, um. We can do this, team. Okay. ADUs and short-term rentals.
You should, you should never mix three letter characters.
What's that?
You should never mix three letter characters. ADUs and STRs do not belong together because they are both three-letter individuals.
Um, yeah, this is an interesting one, right? Like, on one hand, I, I think. Um, the, the compassion side of me is like. I, I've heard folks, and as, you know, as an architect, I, I went through oh eight and watched half of my practicing. Fellow coworkers lose their jobs and do whatever the heck they had to do to feed their families, pay the bills. Um, and so I know that this is not a cheap place to live, and we've, we've heard, we've all heard stories of. People going through times where it just, you, you do whatever you can when a rough time shows up. So on that hand, I, I think. Well, short-term rentals are what they are, you know, people will continue to ski in Aspen until global warming melts the whole mountain. Um, or range. Um, on the other hand. What, we are talking about town character, right? We are, we are opening ourselves up to a, a population increase, perhaps very substantial. I mean, in the long term, um, not necessarily a bad thing, but it is a, it would be a change, it would be more cars on the road. It would be impact on, um, life systems, right? Water, sanitary, et cetera, electricity, power. So again, as I've kind of been trying to do tonight, I'm just kind of putting out there like two kind of competing ideas, just to. Kick this off. Anybody wanna bite on one of those, throw a dart at the other? Um, again, nothing is sacred here, but I'm, I'm not trying, these, these aren't my personal, I'm just trying to get it out. S and thank.
I'll, I'll go. I'm a no on short-term rentals need to use, um, because it's a commercial use of residence. Um, there are other restrictions in our zoning in terms of what you can run as a small business out of your house. I think most of it's based on car trips. Um, but it does change the character of a neighborhood. Um, I stayed in Estes Park once. High season, you know, my sister-in-law had rented a house. Nobody lived on the side of town we were on. It was weird. It was very weird. Um, and I don't wanna see carbon del be that, and I think. It encourages it further, um, cuz there's nothing saying you can't have your primary home as the STR. But you're now saying, okay, you have two units on a property, and who says someone's not going to buy and just. Commercialize whole sections of town.
That is probably the, the principal. Argument, right? The idea of. Entities coming in and, you know, not even living here, but taking advantage of that as an opportunity, so, point is taken. What's to go next?
Uh, I'll, I'll just jump on, cuz I think so far, uh, Jared said. STR and ADU, those acronyms don't go hand in hand. And didn't agree with it. I, 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 you know, just to say about the commercial use too, you know, STRs. You know, you have pretty much an, an FTE for, there's another acronym. To run those. Um, so, you know, that's another employee that you need. Or a cleaner or a maintenance person going there every single day. You know, we already are maybe kind of worried about what the, the neighbor care feels. Um, STRs, we're not regulating how many people, or how many people could drive their cars there. I know we could regulate how many people could use it or sleep in it, but you know, how many cars are going to be driving there? Do you regulate that? And, and so then there's the parking issue, so I just think it's more of a headache than. Um, it is, and, and, and I, and again, when I, when we first talked about this. Uh, the state had that whatever, um, code text for ADUs. And again, ADUs are a naturally occurring infill for a community. To provide workforce housing. And if we think that STRs is a great opportunity to, um, someone to subsidize their mortgage. Um. Uh, I, 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 you know, don't wanna make an opinion on that, but I think you could also subsidize your mortgage by renting long-term as well.
Okay. Um, two things, I, I appreciate that you brought up, just sparked. Um. It would also result in two net positive things, employing that, that cleaner. That is one more job, you know, one more kind of group that could find employment and, you know, in the valley through that, and there would be a tax base. You know, and, and that's a taxable thing to the commercial entity of it. Again, I'm not trying to allow this, I'm just trying to kind of just think about the pros and cons of these.
But a true commercial property has a much higher property tax than a residential property by a lot.
Are you taxing my, I, I, I.
I'm saying if, if I build a motel versus build a development of single-family homes. Uh, the tax burden is much, much higher on the motel because it's a commercial property. Um, I don't remember the ratios.
But it's basically a network.
Twenty-nine versus seven.
Yeah.
Nice work, Jesse. Something like that.
Yeah.
It's, it's a much bigger tax burden on those businesses, and there's also, um.
Oh, what's name is a burden? I was thinking of it as, as a. Revenue generating mechanism. We're trying to build a pool for kids right now and we can't pay for it.
But I don't think you're gonna get there with lodging tax.
Is a networked system over the course of a community. I mean. Okay. Okay, just putting it out there, getting that, not, not, sorry. Uh, who wants to go next? Jesse, what do you got?
Um, I think it's a double-edged sword. I think, uh, you make friends, um, by allowing short-term rentals, but you also lose friends. Um, by allowing them, so I know last, uh, meeting we had, I think it was the architect that mentioned, he jumped up here and said. Uh, in the event him or his wife were to lose a job, they could use it for supplementary income. Supplement their mortgage, but it sounded like they had been renting to a local who had, at one point, I think worked for Five Point Film. Um, and I think when we met during the work session with the mayor and, um, the board of trustees. They gave us direction for, I, I, I believe they used the words workforce housing, so to house folks that were. Working or wanted to kind of be more permanent in nature. Um, uh, yeah, for me, uh, and, and I know Cindy, I think at one point mentioned. She has an ADU and maybe she's done, uh, short-term rental on it, so. Yeah, I think it's a double-edged sword. Um, I, I'm not at the point where I am going to say yes or no to it. Um, I think it's, um, again, it's a, it's a money problem that maybe the owners or the applicant of the home can, um. Determine their needs, if they have the money to build out the ADU, and they're gonna use it to then supplement their, their mortgage payment. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know how we determine, um, yes or no, or, or sticking with a long-term tenant. If that's not what they're looking for, so that one's a hard one for me.
Okay, thanks for.
I agree, it is a hard one, because, um, you think about that, supplementing the mortgage, but. I really shy away from the short-term rental thing because I think we have such a small town. And I think we could really have a mess on our hands, and I think, isn't Aspen already struggling with that?
Being a mess?
Yes, well, on so many levels, um, but, but you know, the short-term rentals, I mean, I think, I would say. ADUs should not be short-term rentals.
Can we, uh, uh, can someone remind me the definition of a short-term rental? What, what is that duration?
Yeah, less than thirty days.
Okay. Um, I was just remembering, uh, there was one in my neighborhood who. Who has like these three-month stay, like people that come for like three months. Someone K comes for like the ski season, he works there every year, comes back every year, stays for a couple of months. Um, there's someone that comes for hunting season and stays for not quite thirty days, but comes every year. Um. And so it just, it was, it, it kind of opened my eyes personally to a different idea, so I had a story of what STRs were. You know, it was just like. People coming from, all of us just, just come in for two weeks or two days and just blow it out and, and, and never come back. So, thanks for reminder on that, the, that kind of, that, hmm, minimum number. Um, okay, so it, so it sounds like no one's really fighting for STRs on this one. So this can be an easy kind of a non.
Yeah, I.
Oh, I thought we were using his acronyms as an answer, sorry, sorry, Jared.
STRs and ADUs despite FTEs are not A-OK. In my. Ar, argle bargle. Now, I think what I would like to maintain, uh, from this commission is, are we doing ADUs? And are we making these more easy to build for people to live here or to vacation here? And I think as far as ADUs are concerned, that we are, across the board, have been talking about how it's an opportunity for people to live here. And an opportunity for people to find a way to, you know, get into the valley and not so much as a way to. Come and recreate and visit and things like that, so to me, I, I don't think they should ever mix. That's oil and, oil and water.
Cool, thank you all for that. Um, that went smoother than I thought it would. Um. All right, uh, moving on to our theoretical last stop, but this is a big one. Jared and Ellie have all kinds of letters in Roman.
Do you want me to kind of give a quick overview to?
Yeah.
Get everybody up to speed?
Please, yes.
So, one of the things, um, that the trustees identified early on in this was, how do we make it easier? Um, some solutions were, or some ideas were remove. Um, review hurdles, review processes, review timelines. Um, create pre-approved ADUs. Where if you pick this floor plan and this model, you can go straight to construction. Um, and so, you know, kind of the global question is, our current process. Requires a minor site plan and a conditional or special use. Which means there's a public hearing involved, application fees, application symbol requirements. Is that necessary for all ADUs? If the answer's yes, I don't think we need to change anything. If the answer's no, then it kind of leads into, to the B. And so the Roman numerals, my goal was to kind of break it out into buckets of types of. ADUs that we would like, we see, you know, an ADU without any exterior building modifications, essentially a basement ADU. Um, an ADU within an existing footprint, such as a second-story addition. An attached ADU where you're kind of building it off to the side of a home. Detached ADUs, and then kind of that last buckets are attack, or ADUs on properties that have. Historical structures or structures of merit. And so, you know, if there's, um. If there's a willingness to look at different review processes, I think those are some categories that are worth discussing. Are certain buckets worth saying no review process? And are other buckets worth saying some review process? Kind of like, um, Jared brought up earlier with, um, you know, maybe one bedroom and smaller ADUs. No extra review process, but a two-bedroom, or larger than eight fifty, maybe, but involves extra review process. So hopefully that kind of helps frame the conversation ever so slightly. Um, and that's kind of gets us through A and B. Um, maybe we can talk about those before getting into, to CD and E, and I can get you back on, on track with some of those.
Are you, didn't see anything, never gonna get off track?
No, 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 no.
Um.
I would never get off track, but that reminds me of this one time.
So in this trust bubble, does anybody feel that all ADUs should require a public hearing? Uh, in this commission, does anybody feel that that is a, a, a should be, continue to be a requirement across the board? Nope. Seeing no hands, we can proceed to letter B in this choose your own adventure. So, um, I love those books. So, and maybe this is, not to simplify what Jared uniquely put together for us here, but. Is there a line for each of you, like literally like a simple line where you're like, you know what? Since we are, since we are all, we've all identified that we are open to a, a potential non-public review process. Public hearing process. You have five Roman numerals. Where does that change for you? So Kim jumps out ahead, number three, I love it, thank you, so. So Kim thinks that.
Between two and three.
Yeah, to me.
So once you go to three. With a, so it, it, it changes. In plan view, the footprint of built structure on a site changes. That is where hearing takes place for you. It feels very intuitive, um, to me, so I appreciate you jumping out and saying that. I see, and your head nodding as well as.
Yeah, I, I feel comfortable with allowing. One and two, the. Existing footprint, footprint and existing building.
Let me, let me try to throw a fly in that.
And.
Is, is it, who are you at, Jared?
I'm gonna challenge Anne to that. Our first interaction was a second-story ADU addition, which is exactly what Roman numeral two is pointing out.
This was my same, this is my same challenge. Yeah, so you have a garage.
Yep.
That is. Whatever, square feet, and you go wall to wall, one story up. It is the minimum offset from one of your neighbor's fences. So it was once a one-story garage. Is now five or ten feet off fence. An entire story. That's. That's enough of a layup. Anything you wanna add to that, that, that theoretical, or that hypothetical, uh, concept, Jared?
No, I, I mean, I think you're kind of getting to the point of it of like. What was there, sure, it's within the footprint and you're not affecting, you know, impervious area, but you are affecting your neighbor. And I think when you begin to affect your neighbors, when you need to come and talk to us about your ADU, otherwise if you're. Within your realms, you know, I don't see how it's offensive to anybody to develop your own property.
You know, that, the one that Jared's referring to, it was also, I believe taller than the primary dwelling.
It was.
Um, because the height of the house, it was, um, like a split entry. So, so the lower floor was more of a partially sunken basement as opposed to a, so two floors above grade. So so the lower floor was more of a partially sunken basement as opposed to a two floors above grade. And I can think of another one on eighth. That was also a split entry. It was a long time ago that that one was built. That they built a new garage with an ADU above and the ADU is. Taller than the primary structure.
Just just to reel it in respectfully.
Right.
That's that was part of a a new garage, so new footprint.
Right.
That would be different than what we're talking about.
Okay.
It's, it's the idea is that there's a garage there. And it could be attached detached garage for that.
Well, they they. Got rid of the garage and built a new garage in the same spot uh and went with a second floor. So they, I think they expanded the garage. And then added a second floor above. Um, but a lot of. The discontent about both of those. Uh, the one no one knew about until after it was built, because people didn't know what ADUs were. Was that the new structure felt so much larger because of the height difference. But the way that that one house on uh eight. Had to do with like the roof peak and not taking the complete height of the peak. For the maximum height of the house. It was something weird where everybody looked at and said, this is so much larger than the other house and. But technically it wasn't.
But what we're asking right now is.
But does that mean it does needs a public review?
Yes, yeah. So should there be a public review if it's within the same footprint?
And I guess the question is.
We're drawing a line. We're saying, and we've landed on is number two.
I know, and I want to be straight through number two. That perhaps if you're not. Increasing the height. Or if there's a a different setback, it can be okay. I don't know.
Jared, just a question um of clarification, you're saying for number two, ADUs with an existing building footprint. If they were to add that ADU above their garage, it would then trigger a public hearing? Is that the question?
That would be, I mean, that would be my answer to two is that if you cross the story plane. Then yes, it is can like that's grounds for review.
For a public here. Okay, understood. We did have one of those on, oh. On Crystal. Um, and it wasn't on Crystal. What is that road um in Crystal Acres along the Crystal River? Remember that one a while back where they added over the garage and the neighbor was unhappy because it was, it went from what was a garage. They had done a modification to their house or something where it was a bedroom addition. And then all of a sudden, this ADU came in up to setback requirement. So maybe even before, where was it, were you ever this one? And then all of a sudden, they felt like they were upset that the neighbor was allowed to do this. ADU next to their bedroom. So I think this is kind of a a real time thing that we have seen as a commission um as far as a conflict, um a neighbor to neighbor conflict on this. So. That's what I think I was thinking of, Jared, and it sounds like you're kind of, we're on a similar wave there. I don't know, and and to me, and Jared, maybe you can correct us here, but that's what I thought you were, you were trying to identify that when you went from one to two. Is that, was that your, your thinking on that?
Yeah, I I think it was kind of the exercise you're going through. What what is that threshold? And and certainly the difference between one and two was that external addition. Vertical, um, yeah, and I think you guys kind of hit all the salient points. Does it matter? You know, I I think the only other thing I throw in there is, what's the difference between someone building an ADU above their garage? That's right next to a setback looking onto their property, neighbor's property or them having a. New master bedroom above their garage and an ADU elsewhere in their structure. Because that wouldn't require a public review if they just say, well, I want to build a second story addition. And it's a new master bedroom. And 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 it's, I I'm not trying to play devil's advocate, but more of a. What is the difference with an ADU versus a master bedroom? In the eyes of this commission that would say hmm, that does result in additional level of public review.
Jared, you just gave away the workaround.
It's objectively speaking, it's, there's familiarity versus non familiarity, right? Like it's, it's your neighbor that your bedroom is next to versus someone who is.
Your future neighbor.
We're, we're trying, yeah, I mean, in in theory, right? But that neighbor could be changing. Every thirty days. Right, again, if we're playing, if we're playing it out like that. That would be if if we were playing the greatest fear game or the, or the, you know. There is that potential um that that is changing up like that.
I recall a lot of um discussion about balconies also, because it's like every ADU has a balcony. Part of that, I think, was for people to get the required outdoor space. But that also changes things also if you have a balcony that's. Yeah, would not have been there in the original house design because it's a addition. I don't.
Me too.
Sorry. Can I, can I, can I ask questions for staff? I think it was in page. And Jared, maybe we were talking about that. That if I do a an addition onto my single story garage. That's a like a, an expansion of my primary residence. Does that require site plan review? Or just check the zoning?
No, in most zone districts, it does not require, it's just a zoning check and a building permit issuance.
And so when I'm looking at. You know, threshold for site uh site plan review type. And then we have exemptions, uh exemption, A, single family detached without accessory dwelling unit. So I could build. A scrap and replace, let's say. And that's, that's no public input. I can go up to the maximum height limit was at thirty five.
Depends on the zone district.
Depends on the zone district, of course, twenty seven. So. You know, again, what I'm, what I'm saying is. An attached uh, what I call an ADU could be an addition and I don't need to, I don't need to have a public hearing. Uh, I I could build a second floor on my detached garage and call that something else and I don't need a public hearing. And I think we're, and I think our code is very generous in saying that an ADU. Requires a public hearing. Because that's a renter and not a homeowner. And that was your argument that every thirty days, you know, we're criminalizing the renter. And so I think renters are a part of this community. I rent, I'm an ADU.
Criminal.
Criminal, let's say, been there for more than thirty days. But all I'm saying is, is uh, you know, there's a lot of ways, as Jared had said, to work around this process. And, you know, as soon as I put in that, that what are a high voltage for an oven and a kitchen sink. Now it's going up to this higher review standard because I could potentially have renters next door. Uh, and I think, you know, is that? Is that the reason why we're going for a, a uh? It's the use, it's it's not even the structure itself at this point. So. So that's why I'm, I, you know, these, these Roman numerals are talking about the structure, the detached, the attached, the basement. And I think at the end of the day, it's, it's, it's more of, what is it going to be used as? And and do we want to? Make it a public hearing? I don't know.
I do, and it it is tough. I mean, I, you you make good points. But I think the challenge that we received from BOT was. How can we reduce the review? How can we make this an easier process? And unfortunately, it isn't just a binary thing, right? We aren't just saying like, open the floodgates or keep them closed. So at some level, there has to be like, we're, we're, we're finding a level, and I'm sorry if I did it in a way that was too. Lowbrow. I mean, please, if you see, if you see a, like a better way, I I was just trying to.
Yeah, so my opinion would be uh no public hearing.
For for any of it.
Yeah.
There you go.
I think Franco brings up a really good point of, and and Jared did as well of like. You know, what if you put your master bedroom there and you put your ADU in the basement? It's like, great, you saved yourself from the review. But to me, it is about the use and the, like, the use is the impact that it has on the neighbors. Um, similar to Nick, what you were saying, it's allowing criminals into your home and it's um your basics. I tried to say that straight face.
Put that in the minutes.
I really tried. But you're adding, you're adding these other parties into your home at an elevated plane. Let's just call it that, right? You have parking, you have noise, you have all these other impacts from that ADU. And if you don't, if you want to have an ADU and you want to build upwards and you can, but you want to go through the review process. It's right there for you. But if you want to put your ADU up top. You're gonna have to go through a review and you're gonna have to talk to your neighbors in a public forum. And I think it's like. Again, the use dictates the impact and that's what I think we're trying to review and. Have people bring to us. I don't want people to do that. I want to make it so people have their ways to cut through it. But more often than not, from what we've seen is people have added ADUs on a second story.
A question for staff. How would you all feel about? All this coming through you with no public review? Probably like in every ADU, it was solely on you as staff, your department chair to decide.
We love being the punching bag of the community. Um, no, in all seriousness, I think. You know, the the code is what the code's gonna be and um I don't think we would have any issue. Applying all the other standards of the code, whether it's an administrative review, no different than we do with single family residences. A zoning check or, you know, if if there's a public review, I think. I think Jared kind of hits the nail on the head of the public reviews, really that forum for. Neighbors and other members of the immediate neighborhood to voice concerns. And to be heard and that doesn't exist if it's a staff level review because they won't know about it.
Right.
And so um we have no issues. Doing administrative reviews, but also. We're not going to be providing that public forum by doing that. So it's trade offs.
Which goes to just this idea of good neighbor policy in my mind to a degree, right? Like if you can. I I think more and more these days, we are talking to our neighbors less and less. There's all kinds of statistics about that out there. Not going to go into that too much. But I think that's really what we're, what we're kind of talking about at this point is what this discussion is going to come down to is the idea that. You know, like. Some neighbors, the only way they're going to talk about this or divulge this is because of this requirement. Otherwise. Um, I know there are neighbors, I'm sure we all know the neighbors that don't like each other, you know, in our neighborhoods. It happens, it's totally human, it's A okay. And. This. You know, some level of um review. Would be a safeguard for me that that could be otherwise, you know, not discussed, not identified. Again, I'm just playing extremes here. As I say that, does that, you know, where, does that change anyone's line on this?
What if you skip down to part D? I know we're not trying to do that, but are there other ways? I know it's so wild, but.
And and so I added this because at one of the previous conversations, I think it was brought up either from. Nick or Franco or both you guys saying in other communities, they. Require a notice to be posted on site or mailed to your neighbors, but it's not necessarily a formal review. It's. Informing them, um, they have a certain amount of time before the building permits issued. And so if that's something that. Is worth us looking into a bit more, we can look into it. I just didn't want to go look into it if you guys are like, no, we're, we're not even interested in that concept.
Jared, I believe I.
Say that again?
I'm sorry. I believe I talked about this point too of like, if we want to remove that, but still be able to hear the neighbors like. They have a certain window in order, like the same window that you gave for a public notice, the same window that the neighbors have to. Come back with any sort of. Uh, veto or. You know, lack of support for the project and then that would take it to the hearing. I think that would be. A great way of being able to hear out the neighbors, but also. You know, maintaining our ability to provide that forum.
So, so if I'm just summarizing, so I understand kind of what you're saying. So someone is interested in doing an ADU. Post notice or mail's notice, whatever that is. If no one complains, permit issued. If even one person complains.
Yes.
It goes to a public hearing?
From experience, um, and the Home Rule Charter. That I work with, it's a thirty days newspaper, thirty days envelope. To three hundred feet from your property and then fifteen, fifteen days of uh onsite notice. I don't know what our home, you know, our Home Rule Charter here has. And this is staff's opportunity to, you know, explain. You guys, what, you know, is potential, you know, what is potentially being built on onsite? And I think it's always helpful for when staff could have discussions with neighbors. Um, about the impacts and what's going on because a lot of neighbors just see development and the hands go up. So if if there's an opportunity to have those discussions between staff, this is my opinion, staff and and um. Uh, neighbors or concerned neighbors, I think that's a great time to. Do that rather than people coming to a hearing and not being as informed as they can be when they have. You know, and if, and if, and if staff, you know, can't talk someone, you know, into the development. Yeah, then that's an objection and it could potentially get what we call called up to a planning and zoning or BOT. Uh, and we have that language in our code.
So then would one resident within three hundred feet have the power to push it up under that?
Not even within three hundred feet. I think anybody, I think, you know, that's just the noticing rules. But I think anybody, if they have a concern for any lot in town that they walk by a house and see a. Uh, a public notice and they go to staff and see. That development.
Yeah.
Uh, and they don't like that development. They could object and get it brought up to. Or called up is what we call in our code.
Is this one of those things that you all? Or anyone here, is there a? An iterative solution, a incremental solution here? And we've been talking about, we've kind of gone down the route of more of kind of just like, staff has said, yeah, we'll take it on. Various, you know, jokes aside, there, there's been, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of kind of like. You know, moving away from a certain level of review. Does it feel safe? Does it feel like a good idea for this to be one of those like? Just to undo it or is there, is there some incremental space? Kind of going back to that line, I guess, but just. Not maybe, maybe, maybe not going quite to the idea of of drawing the line.
I have, I have a potential, you know, incremental solution is that. We have all these criteria that brings people in for special review. And like with regards to an ADU, if there's overwhelming support from the neighbors, then I think that would cancel our review. You know, if if they're coming and saying, no, this is great, like if we get. You know, majority of the neighbors are saying this is a great addition. We've talked to them. We're very supportive of what they're doing, then. I think that would. In turn, just negate that. Public hearing, so if you if you do your due diligence and talk to your neighbors and get out and get them on. Your side. Again, that's another way to work around it.
So kind of like carrot versus stick approach.
Yes, exactly.
I like carrots. That's cool.
Just a question for Jared, um, if someone, if the town went the direction of. Not allowing the short term rentals. Someone comes in, wants to build an ADU and asks for a variance to allow a short term rental, would that then trigger? The public hearing part of it if we say.
I I think that's kind of part of this overall conversation, you know, are there certain things? That you would say you'd be willing to. Allow through a conditional special use. Review, STRs could be that. Certain types of ADUs could be that. Certain uses within that ADU could be that. Number of bedrooms, and so I I I think we can. You know, I I think there's the potential for us to come back with with something for you guys and maybe ponder something a little bit more based on this. Maybe two, three as one option. To say no public review versus public review, maybe we propose a different. Kind of interim step of no public review, notify your neighbors and then full public review or or something along those lines and we. Create maybe a tiered review system based on. How? Potentially impactful.
Cause anecdotally, you know, I could imagine a. Garage. In the center of a backyard on an alley. That wants to build an ADU. Great. Here's your folks knocked out of the park. Right, no neighbors. What's that?
Sorry, I interrupted, I'm sorry. I was saying, but what if it blocks the view of sopris? Like, people will always find a way to have an issue. So we've seen.
Some sort of Goldilocks scenario, right? Where it, you know. Considering like just trying to find ways to reduce or to. Leave it to more administrative, I I think those are out there. We just need to find the ones that like you, like what Jared was just saying. What are the stipulations? How maybe maybe that's the idea of this this uh. Um incremental approach is that it is just just open it all up, but it's like, okay. We're gonna try to put a bunch of it, it is in administrative and staff. Kind of guided. And then it is very easy thresholds that we can recommend as a commission. Um, based on. You know, again, easing our way in. So and and I don't interrupt you, Jared's just set them off or a bunch of them, so how would, how do you all feel about that kind of approach?
I'm a little mushy, but I'll try. I didn't hear anybody objecting. To allowing them without review if there's no exterior building modification. In terms of the square footage not changing. My thought is with. Since we're allowing detached ADUs, I'm hoping that would. Perhaps reduce some of the burden on neighbors with people doing second stories. Um, because a lot of that design was because we were requiring attachment to the primary residence. But I also started thinking about um when we're talking about. Other buildings. And changing zoning with a a zoning difference on the neighboring lot. And having to have stepped back stepped back buildings and things like that. Um, is there a way to work item number two? For certain additions to be okay, or is that just make it? A harder review for staff. I I don't know the right. Way to describe what I'm saying, but like. Other buildings we've reviewed. You know, there's been, if there's a single story next to it. Then you couldn't butt up a three story next to it, right? That you had to.
I was not quite sure where you're going here, but it sounds like you still wanna hold on to some of the review.
I think I think some of it for item number two, um, just because the impact can be great if you have a smaller home. And someone's building to their.
So easy way of doing it, not to cut you off, in the interest of time with seven minutes left. Maybe what we're saying is. That there are parameters to define. Where the threshold of review is.
For item number two.
We can work together to identify those. And so. It's not so much of an item two, item three, item four, it's it's what are the? You know, those things could be part of that list, sure, but we are not going to define this in seven minutes. So we're going to look to create a list to recommend. To delineate. What that where where the review track would go, is that making sense? Does that?
It's a flow chart. If you want this. If you want this, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Cool, so then.
We'll create that and they will all lead back to the same answer.
The same answer is your neighbors are coming.
But but again, if, you know, if out of the gates, if it's, it is like it it. It's we're testing this, right? Like. It is much easier to to soften than it is to take things away. People don't like to have toys be taken away. So. And and I think we all have the intention of, you know, supporting this effort, so. So in our our last five minutes. Uh, so you're, Jared, do you wanna kind of do us do the CDE with us? What are your thoughts on?
So the the CUP and SUP. Based on my review of those. I haven't seen any. Condition that doesn't restate the conditions already outlined in the code. Um, and so I don't necessarily know if there's any. Benefit to those. I don't know if there's been improved outcomes through a conditional special use permit. Um, that you haven't achieved with just a site plan review. So I don't know if those are necessarily. Needed additional. Processes. The, so, yeah, I think Ellie brings up a good point, you know, if there is a prohibition or a limitation on STRs. That would be one way within a conditional or special use permit to. Further define that. Another way would just be the code saying ADUs are not permitted to be used, but. Yeah, I think it's really kind of maybe depends on where you guys fall on that STR, you and the trustees fall on that STR spectrum, so. I think we can kind of. Come back to that conversation as we move forward with some of this process. Discussion, and I think to to me, E is. You know, I I think we can just do a very simple yes, no, is I think I know the answer. Um, already, but would like to get. Reassurance from you. Do you all support some truncated PUD amendment process? To allow PUDs to be amended to permit. An ADU. As a use.
Um, short answers, yes or no, Jared?
Short answer for do we support PUD amendment process? Yeah, I mean, I guess I would.
Okay, Anne?
Yes.
Jesse.
Jared, just to clarify, that would be the PUD request, making the request.
Yeah, we haven't really gone too far down it, but yes, it would be the PUD. Making that request where maybe it's a truncated process if the only portion requests is. Saying ADUs are permitted.
Understood, my answer is yes.
Yes.
Yeah, short answer, yes, with uh requirements for the code.
So you were, you were probably right on that one. Anything left here?
I- is there anything we missed? And just.
I'm sure there is.
Global topic that you say, how come you didn't bring this up?
My biggest thing that I've always brought up. Okay.
No, God, just kidding.
No, it's fine. My biggest thing is always storage and Franco, you kinda like skirted around this, but like. We have a lot of gear, we have a lot of. Space to recreate out here and I I wonder. You know, if we have, I can't remember if we do have s- uh certain storage requirements. But I think it would be very interesting to see, you know, if we're. If we're gonna start reducing the minimum size of the ADU, like does that come with? Additional storage benefits or things of that nature? That's just my input of things I think that we could talk about.
Just just to add on. I think ADUs could have like a. Exempt fifty square foot uh from lot coverage, storage, I don't know, that's why.
I'm with you.
Got it. Built on shed.
Yeah, like a palleted shed you could move off if you needed it.
Or an out outdoor closet kind of deal.
Yes, exactly.
Bikes, skis. Art equipment. Anything else?
Should we move?
With that. Um, I am open to a. A movement.
Motion to continue the public hearing for amendment to the Universal Development Code for the purposes of reviewing regulations related to ADUs. To October ninth, twenty twenty five.
Second, Jared, motion, second, Jesse, vote. All those in favor? Eyes have it. Already, um, hey, that was awesome. Again, folks, um, really good conversation. Way to hit it on the nose.
You know, I'm an alternate and and an alternate, I believe. Well, I guess like going forward with uh members absent. You know, how is this, you know, I can be caught up on our discussion or? Has this become the voting cast going forward?
Um, I mean, ultimately, when when the item is ready to be voted on. At that. Hearing, depending on who is present, who is not. Will determine who votes, but. Um, it's always been our our policy alternate or regular to have every member in attendance participate in all. Conversations, provide input, feedback and to um consider everyone's. Um, input regardless of whether they're a regular member or an alternate, so. Since we are down one plan zoning commission member and historically, we've had very few meetings where everyone's been in attendance, I would assume. Most of the time. Both alternates will be voting members.
Right, it's likely. You spoke to Jeff, you said, is is it his intention to continue being a commissioner?
Yeah, based on our last conversation, but I can reach out to him again and see where he stands.
Okay, it's it's been a while for him right now, so I know he's got a lot going on with family and. Since we will be looking for one commission member, I think it'd be really helpful for him to identify if. He's gonna. Be here or or not.
Sounds good.
And happy to, you know, if you'd like help with that, but I'm sure you can. Set update.
Got nothing. Don't think we have any noticed public hearings. On the immediate horizon. So. The second meeting in September could be canceled or um we could kick off the parking conversation, we'll kind of see. Staff capacity. Your mic wasn't on, so Jared didn't hear.
I did hear.
Well, and then again, that is why I did ask um that um group to could to. Give us a thing about if you guys are all still interested in that or not, or she is not a group, she she comes from a very well known parking group. But it would be. That was in something, it was on the table if this commission was interested in that and found would find value in. Someone kind of giving us some. Real world kind of feedback guidance. So Jared, are you looking for us to give some feedback on the second meeting in September at this point or? We'll just go let let that one lie for now and.
Yep, let it lie for now.
Anybody else? Have a great night, folks. Thank you so much. Jared, go massage your ankle.
Yeah, I'm gonna go and put it as high up in the air as I possibly can.
Yeah, thanks, bud. Appreciate you showing up.
Later, y'all.
Have a good night.